Our clerk Connor Ayers to call roll for attendance.
Thank you. Counselor Simpson.
President, good morning.
Morning. Counselor Gonzalez.
Present.
Counselor Rosenthal.
Present.
Counselor Nolan.
Right here.
Counselor Lewis.
Present.
And President Peterson is excused today. And Deputy Counsel President Wong.
Present.
Okay, before we begin our agenda items, can we please play the safety video for our in-person attendees? All right, our first topic today regards potential changes to and future development of the Montgomery Park area of Northwest Portland. One of Metro's key roles is to collaborate with local jurisdictions to support the development of communities that share, that meet our shared goals, such as creating spaces where people can live, work, shop, and recreate in their own safe, walkable neighborhoods. Today, the city of Portland will walk us through the proposals. The city is considering to extend streetcar service and make associated land use changes in the Montgomery Park area. In addition to the city's presentation, our council will hear options presented by Metro staff that could facilitate regulatory updates to support the city's proposal and advance the goals and policies of our own regional framework plan. So here today, we have Glenn Hamburg, Associate Regional Planner, and Patricia Diefenherfer, Chief Planner for the City of Portland. Welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel President Wong and Council. I'm Glenn Hamburg, Associate Regional Planner, using he/him pronouns. I'm going to let the city's chief planner, Patricia Diefenherfer, give a high-level summary of what the city is working on for this Montgomery Park area. And then, following that presentation, I'll share some opportunities that the Metro Council may have to align some metro regulatory maps with the city's work and ultimately to potentially advance some regional framework plan policies. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Patricia.
Great, thank you. Is this mic on? All good? Everyone can hear me? Perfect, all right. Thank you so much for that introduction, Glenn. Good morning, councilors. My name is Patricia Diefenherfer. As Glenn said, I am the Chief Planner for the city in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I use she/her pronouns. I am joined here by members of the team who've been working on this project, Ryan Singer and Barry Manning, also from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, as well as Sean Canny and Mauricio Laclerk from the Portland Bureau of Transportation, and Dan Bauer from the Portland Streetcar, Inc., who is joining us online and has been an integral member of the team as well. And so, as Glenn mentioned, I'm here to talk about the proposed Montgomery Park area plan. Will you all be advancing slides for me? Yes, thank you. Okay, so next slide, please. The vision for Montgomery Park area plan is for a dynamic, low-carbon, mixed-use neighborhood with equitable access to housing and economic opportunity. Next slide, please. The city's objectives for the area are to create a more intense mixed-use area that incorporates housing while maintaining a jobs focus and that can support the proposed streetcar extension that would serve the area. The city is working to achieve middle-wage jobs, affordable housing, affordable commercial space, climate resilience, and public open space through future development in the area. It is achieving these objectives through a value capture strategy that employs regulations and a public benefit agreement with owners of the two large opportunity sites in the area. The Montgomery Park, pardon me, next slide, please. The Montgomery Park area plan is an outgrowth of the Montgomery Park to Hollywood study. This study was funded through a Federal Transit Administration grant that was provided to the city through a partnership with Metro. The study looked at potential streetcar extensions in the Inner East Side and in the Northwest. The project that we're talking about today is advancing the concepts that were in that study for the Northwest area. Next slide, please. The original Northwest study area was a much larger area, and the streetcar alignment was different when the project originally started as part of that study. Through outreach and analysis, the area proposed for change has been focused greatly and is focused on the area west of Highway 30. And the streetcar alignment has been modified to more efficiently and directly serve the area of the proposed change. So you can just see in the map, the area in the white dashed line was the original quite large study area, and it was ultimately narrowed and refined down to the area that's in the dashed red. And the yellow streetcar route there was the original streetcar route that has since been modified, and a different slide will show that revised alignment. Next slide, please. Thank you. So just by way of some background, there were multiple land use scenarios were considered, including, as I noted, a much broader area and changes to the area east of Highway 30. Based on input that was received, the city staff refined the boundaries of the planned area, focusing the areas of change on the greatest opportunity and where changes in the existing land uses were already occurring, and that was largely in that area west of Highway 30. Next slide, please. So the city's planning goals were shaped by public input, and they include expanding opportunities for both housing and jobs, and specifically for middle-wage jobs and affordable housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about housing that is affordable to households of 60% of median family income or below. Equitable development outcomes have been a priority in this planning process from the beginning and has led to the city's value capture strategy, which I'll describe a little more. Next slide, please. So I just want to give you a little bit of background as to the kind of outreach that was conducted. Over the course of the study, the city staff engaged with many neighborhood groups and other stakeholders with interest in the efforts in this area. The city provided funding for Friendly House, the Northwest Industrial Business Association, and other groups to conduct outreach and to provide input in the process. The city also provided funding to the York Street Work Group, which is a group who's expressed interest in the area because of the affiliation with the York Street, which is the street in the area. And the funding was used to help them organize and participate in the planning process. Throughout the process, which has been occurring over a five-year period, staff held workshops, open houses, and focus groups to help shape the details of the proposal. Next slide, please. As you can see from this graphic, this graphic kind of shows what the overall concept of the plan is, but essentially, the proposed plan, as we've noted, focuses the areas of change west of Highway 30 around a streetcar extension. And you can see on this slide, the yellow lines depict the updated streetcar alignment. The area east of Highway 30, which was originally part of the study, would now be preserved for industrial uses. So you can see those areas of blue and green essentially remain untouched. The area of change, you can see the orange-colored area on this map represents the area where mixed use would be allowed. And you can see a sort of blue buffer to the north of that orange area, and that is an employment buffer area that's been preserved. It will not allow residential uses. It will only allow employment uses to serve as a buffer between the mixed-use area that's being created to the south and the heavy industrial area that is located to the north. This plan that you see depicted on this graphic would achieve many of the housing and employment goals that planning staff heard were priorities during the outreach process, and also work to preserve significant areas of stable industrial land. Next slide, please. So zooming into the area, this image is just a graphic that shows the potential future with larger buildings along the streetcar extension, which you can see depicted in yellow. And it also depicts some of the public realm improvements that would support the evolving uses in the area, including new streets that would be built in the area to integrate the large parcels into the existing street grid. Next slide, please. To put the proposed development in context, the Northwest study area has over 7,000 office jobs and over 4,000 production and distribution jobs. The Montgomery Park plan has the potential to add an additional 4,000-plus jobs in a variety of different types of jobs and sectors. The Public Benefits Agreement that will accompany this proposed plan would also require up to 800 middle-wage jobs to be new, net new middle-wage jobs, to be created on the two large opportunity sites in the area. It's notable that the Northwest area has seen a higher job growth when compared to citywide average since 2008. And the most significant growth was in the office jobs. So maintaining an office, sorry, a jobs focus while trying to also retain or create opportunities for new middle-wage jobs has been a focus of this plan in addition to being able to introduce some housing into the area. Next slide, please. For more context on housing, the surrounding area is a high-opportunity area that is relatively stable, is a relatively stable area with lower risk of displacement than potentially other areas of the city where similar actions might, you know, be considered. The Northwest area has higher incomes and more people with college degrees or advanced degrees than the rest of Portland. You can see some of those statistics on the slide. The Montgomery Park area plan would create capacity for 2,000 or more units of housing, which could house 4,000, over 4,000 new residents. The 200-plus-income restricted housing units that I mentioned would be, the requirement would be for 60% of median area income would be realized either through the Public Benefits Agreement or through an enhanced inclusionary housing incentive in the proposed zoning regulations. These additional 200 units, which would be a minimum number of affordable units, would be a 77% increase in the number of income-restricted affordable units that exist in the area currently, the broader area, not the study area, it's the planned area, but the broader Northwest area. So it would be a significant infusion of new income-restricted affordable housing. Next slide, please. So just to kind of sort of encapsulate, the approach to this plan was to create opportunities for development in the area, to connect the area to transit, and to deploy this value capture strategy with a focus on jobs, housing, open space, place-making, and green features in combination with quality urban design. Next slide, please. So ultimately, we want to highlight for you some of the key objectives and generally how they're being achieved in the area. The goal is to create a true mixed-use neighborhood. To achieve the jobs and employment uses, the zoning code deploys a mix of requirements and incentives to ensure that the Public Benefit Agreement's pledge of 800 middle-wage jobs is achieved. Affordable commercial space would be both required and incentivized, pardon me, sorry about that, incentivized by the code and the Public Benefits Agreement. The citywide inclusionary housing program works with market, with the market to provide income-restricted housing as part of new, larger market-rate housing developments. It is carefully calibrated program that is just one of the ways to produce affordable income-restricted units. The Montgomery Park proposal would leverage the program to create upfront 200 units of affordable income-restricted housing that would be delivered first and to provide that benefit as soon as possible. If the 200 units are not constructed first, then the zoning code complements the benefits agreement by allowing greater development rights if 15% of the dwelling units are affordable, and that would also be again at the 60% AMI level or MFI level. Next slide, please. So another goal of the plan is to promote sustainable, resilient, and amenity-rich area. That includes the provision of a 40,000-square-foot park or open space, which is an important element of the plan. The zoning code proposes an outdoor space requirement with an incentive to consolidate some of that open space from the large, on the larger sites in the area to create a publicly accessible park. The Public Benefits Agreement will require the open space and the park itself with the provisions with provisions for the timing and the location of that park. The Montgomery Park area plan is a transit-oriented development plan, so in to that end, advances the comprehensive plan goals of fostering a complete neighborhood that is served by carbon-neutral and multimodal transportation options. The proposed comprehensive plan and zoning code changes require and incentivize green building features and require a high-quality design through a design overlay and associated regulations and tools. The Urban Design Studio at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability has worked with the Bureau of Transportation to align the design elements with the transportation features of the plan to ensure buildings and streets make good places where people want to be in future. Next slide, please. So I won't spend too much time on this slide. The main purpose of this slide is to just communicate that the proposed plan uses a variety of tools to implement the planning goals that have been described, and those tools include regulatory tools, design and transportation policies, and non-regulatory tools, such as the Public Benefit Agreement. Next slide, please. Want to touch briefly on the streetcar. The streetcar extension is an important component of the plan, and this plan has, from the very beginning, been designed to be a coordinated land use and transportation plan so that the land uses and the transportation support each other and create a sustainable and successful area in the city. That extension would run from Northrop Street, Northwest Northrop Street, and Northwest 23rd Avenue to the Montgomery Park Office Building, as you can see depicted. The transportation project significantly leverages federal funding. It would leverage federal funding not only for the streetcar extension, but also for the reconstruction of Northwest 23rd Avenue and other multimodal local street improvements in the area. The extension is projected to add 3,000 new daily riders to the north-south streetcar line, which represents a 40% increase in the line's daily ridership. Next slide, please. The proposed extension is a 0.65-mile one-way extension. It again travels up 23rd Avenue and then has one-way couplets on Northwest Roosevelt and Wilson Streets, as you can see depicted here. And currently, the expectation is there would be three new stations along this line, and those stations would be finalized through the project development process for the streetcar. Next slide, please. Almost to the end here, just here, wanted to share that in addition to the outreach that the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability did around the land use changes, the Portland Bureau of Transportation also did significant engagement and outreach around the streetcar extension. And I think, next slide, please, but I do think that that pretty much concludes the presentation. I just wanted to add a couple of quick notes. The importance of coordinating land use and the transportation, of course, is that it improves, also improves the competitiveness of the streetcar project for federal funding. And I just wanted to also share that in terms of process, the Portland Planning Commission approved this plan on July 9th and voted to recommend that City Council adopt the proposed plan. Staff is currently working on preparing that recommended plan to take to City Council along with the streetcar locally-preferred alignment or the LPA so that they, to the Portland City Council in the fall, and that will help advance both the land use changes, but also the streetcar project and get it ready for subsequent steps with the to seek funding and go into project development. So with that, I conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions and turn it back over to you, Glenn.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Counselors, if you'd like to maybe ask specific questions about the city's proposal now, that works, or I can just jump into a quick three- or five-minute discussion about Metro's land use connection to this proposal, and we could have questions after that.
Let's go questions for, let's be first. Alex. Counselor Nolan.
One detailed question. On one of your slides, you showed 1100, a comparison between Northwest and citywide. People and household, or families, you called them.
Yes.
1,100 families, but 6,000 some odd people?
Yes.
That's a six-person-per-household number, or did you mean something else by families?
Yeah, I'd have to check with staff here. Maybe, Ryan, do you want to help me out there?
That would be a 100-year-old practice.
Yeah.
It's good.
It's on. Okay. These are census data. Hi, this is Ryan Singer. I'm the principal planner for long-range planning and urban design at BPS. Those are census figures. I believe that we used the household data and called them families because we wanted a somewhat more accessible term, and that households, as defined by the census, don't always include individuals, and this is an area that has low number of children in those, so that that's the discrepancy there.
Makes sense. I do have a question about the plan. It's a nice concept plan. Has a lot of advantages. You talked about capacity to support x thousands of new housing units and x thousands of new jobs. Is the city incorporating mechanisms that will get closer to this is possible here to, this is going to happen. I noticed you had some enforcement in your affordable housing, and 200 units seems pretty small production of affordable housing. 5% of the total new housing. So two questions, I guess. One is, talk about why affordable housing is so low a percentage, and secondly, talk about other ways you can assure that if this plan is approved, that we get the capacity delivered and not de minimis.
Yeah, so the affordable housing is actually 10% of the total units. And so because if we say 2,000 units, right, 200 units is 10% of that, so that's the kind of the starting point.
So 4,000 was the.
4,000 was jobs. 4,000 was the capacity for new jobs. And 4,000 people could live in those 2,000 units. Yeah, so we say, you know, with an average household size of just around two, just under, just over two people per housing unit, you have the ability to house, we estimate about 4,400 people in those 2,000 units, 200 of which would be affordable. So that is a 10% of the units being affordable. And that's also, that's only if they're provided upfront. There's the public benefit. So you asked, how will we ensure that we get these things? The city is using a public benefit agreement was kind of a novel tool. Yeah, we haven't quite used a tool like that in this kind of situation before. And that, the combination of the Public Benefits Agreement and the zoning code are the mechanisms that the city is using to be able to ensure that these things occur. So the zoning code, you know, lays out the requirements, and then the Public Benefit Agreement kind of solidifies the commitments around some of those things. And so that, also, if the units are not provided upfront, the affordable units, then there's actually provisions in the zoning code that kick in that will only grant additional development rights, like greater floor area ratios, for example, and greater height, if additional affordable housing is provided at the rate of 15%.
Okay, that's really helpful.
Thanks, sure.
I could follow up on the Public Benefits Agreement. You know, I know the city worked on a pretty high-profile benefit agreement on the Broadway Corridor. And I'm wondering, if you could speak more about kind of the difference in process and also who might the signatories be
Sure.
on Montgomery Park and levels of like enforceability that would be kind of, you know, baked into the benefit agreement?
Sure, yeah, I can address that. So my understanding of the Broadway Corridor project is that there was there's a couple, there's a few conditions that are different about that project, but in that instance, that was a situation where there's public land that is involved, and there's also public financing of a project, so it is in a redevelopment area, TIF, Tax Increment Financing District area. And so when you have a situation where you have public land and public financing of future development project, and in that case, Broadway Corridor is a development project, in this situation, this is a plan. This is not a project proposal. It is a plan that would be adopted on which future development can occur. So in the case of the Broadway Corridor, my understanding is that there was a term sheet developed for what's called a community benefits agreement, and there were community members who were party to developing those terms along with the Prosper Portland. So the community, my understanding is it has not evolved to an actual signed agreement, but it is just terms that were adopted by council. In this instance, we're employing a public benefit agreement, which would be signed by the city and the two large property owners with whom this agreement, who are participants in this agreement. So that's who the signatories would be.
And then what levels of enforceability would there be if the property owners did not, you know, meet those agreements?
Like with any other contract with the city, I mean, you know, the, both parties, all the parties go in with the intention of complying with the agreement. And that the enforceability comes from its legal standing as an agreement, and if for some reason the terms were not complied with, the public benefit terms have alternate or multiple ways to comply in the hopes that that creates flexibility. If one avenue doesn't work out, there's another way to capture some public benefits, but ultimately, legal enforceability, you know, is, will be used if there is noncompliance.
And on the affordable housing, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but is there like a partnership with the Housing Bureau where a part of those 200 units would be publicly subsidized, or are we looking at like inclusion rate zoning?
Yeah, as required by the terms of the Public Benefits Agreement as they stand, it would actually be a private, the city's local funding, public funding would not be used for the project. The commitment on the part of the property owners is that they would fund the affordable housing. It would be their inclusionary housing bank, if you will, for the subsequent 2,000 units that would be built. And they've committed to not using city local funding. They may use some federal tax, you know, credit programs or funding sources, but they would, they've committed to not using local funding for these units.
Alex, any more questions for the city?
Thank you, and I'll promise to be brief. Connor, if you wouldn't mind dialing up that presentation, I just wanted to summarize what land use connection there is with Metro's regulations. Some of these, we've already had an opportunity to discuss with you, but again, want to summarize those and see if there's any questions about that. But again, want to summarize those and see if there's any questions about that and further direction from the council. So next slide, please, Connor. As you're aware, Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan has requirements for our cities and counties in the region in terms of their own land use regulations. And Title Four of the UGMFP, the functional plan, has regulations for local governments that seek broadly to protect the supply of sites for industrial and other family wage jobs throughout the region. In specific locations that I'll show you. The requirements of Title Four require local governments to prohibit certain types of land uses in designated areas. Notably, as you know, these requirements do not include a prohibition on residential land uses. So Metro's Title Four does not prohibit in these designated areas that I'll show you the allowance for residential land uses. Title Four does, however, require local governments to restrict certain other types of land uses, things like schools and parks, places of assembly, so we're talking community centers, for example, retail commercial uses, so including grocery stores and other types of uses like medical and dental offices. Next slide, please. This is the Title Four map. This is where in the region these restrictions are required to apply. They're in the various shades of blue. The different shades of blue just correspond to different levels of restrictions. Next, oh, and before the next slide, I just want to clarify, this is not a zoning map. This is just a map of where Metro's requirements on local governments in terms of restrictions on these non industrial and non residential land uses apply. To be sure, there are throughout the region areas outside of these blue areas that are zoned by local governments for industrial uses. And even within these blue areas, there are land uses, for example, for residential zoning. So it's not a zoning map. It's just a map to show where Metro's land use restrictions apply throughout the region. Next slide, please. This is a close up of that same map in the Montgomery Park area, which is outlined here in red with Nicolai Street to the north and Vaughn Street to the south. So that blue shaded area is the regionally significant industrial area, which has the highest restrictions on non industrial and non residential land uses. And then, as you've heard me refer to it, the C is another Title Four designation with just some, I'll say, less strict regulations on non residential and non industrial uses. So in the entire region, there's about forty nine thousand acres of Title Four restricted area. In the Montgomery Park area, here in red, that's about sixty acres with a Title Four designation. So we're talking about point one percent of the overall Title Four restricted area in the region. Next slide, please. So Metro staff have observed in the city's discussions with the public, including in public hearings. But there has been community feedback that is interested in seeing certain types of land uses in the Montgomery Park area if residential land uses were to be allowed there by the city. So, for example, we've heard in public testimony that if there's going to be residential uses in this area, they hope to see a park, particularly a park that could serve the larger Northwest Portland area, for example. There's interest in there being a grocery store so that future residents can walk to a grocery store and not have to travel far. Maybe something like a community center. Ultimately, there's interest that we've observed in a walkable transit oriented community where residents could meet their daily needs within walking distance or otherwise close by. Next slide, please. And as you know, Metro's Regional Framework Plan has a number of policies that promote things like a compact urban form as a climate action strategy. Trying to keep growth compact so that there isn't additional vehicle trips far outside in long distances. Regional Framework Plan policies also seek to promote infill and redevelopment within the urban area to promote biking, walking and transit use, access to parks, schools and other public facilities. And of course, high density mixed use in transit oriented urban centers. I've listed some specific policies in the staff report, but these are some of the broad themes of policies that I cite. Next slide, please. So Metro staff are here to impart, to see if there is interest in the Metro Council to direct staff to propose an ordinance to amend that Title Four map. That map with those blue colors on it specifically for the Montgomery Park area. If there is, we could present an ordinance to remove those restrictions, which would ultimately allow the city, if it so chooses, to permit those non industrial and non residential land uses in the area. And that might be responsive to some of the and also help to advance certain policies of the regional framework plan. So my questions for you all, and maybe you have question for us as well, are are there concerns with allowing those non industrial and non residential land uses in the area, even if the city were to permit residential land uses there? Would allowing things like a park, schools, retail commercial uses in the area help to advance regional policies? For example, walkability, access to transit. And then finally, the big ticket question. Should we staff draft an ordinance to remove those Title Four restrictions in that Montgomery Park area? With that, those are my questions, but I'm happy to answer any that you might have as well.
Let's go with Constable Rosenbaum. Yeah, just a question. The there was a buffer area shown on the map. What portion of that that would that retain the, in other words, removal of Title Four restrictions would only apply to the area below the buffer? Is that correct? Or would that would that retain the same restrictions? Or how would how would that work?
We could certainly entertain the idea of only removing Title Four designations from some of the seventy four acre Montgomery Park area. But maybe it'd be worthwhile to just remove all of the Title Four restrictions in order to give the city some flexibility of deciding where specifically to locate certain uses.
How, on what basis would the city make that kind of decision? I mean, limiting the removal of Title Four restrictions might be a good idea. I'm not opposed to it in this case because of the potential plan, but how would you make a decision as to whether to include all of it or just just the non buffered portions?
Maybe before Patricia answers, I'll just note that even if if the Title Four restrictions were to remain in that northern buffer area, that northern buffer area would still have restrictions on retail commercial uses, community center, medical and dental offices. And those, while not residential land uses, may be land uses that the city would hope to see even in that buffer space.
Yeah, I would I would just concur with that statement. I think that while the the objective there is to not allow residential uses in that area so as to not create sort of you know, direct adjacency of residential with industrial uses. Some of those other uses may be beneficial in this area. We would like the ability to not have it be so restrictive.
Constable Simpson, then Nolan.
Thank you, Deputy President Wong. Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, Patricia, for your presentation. I'm generally supportive of this, the NPAP, we call it the NPAP. And I'm generally supportive of easing those restrictions to fall in line with the values of creating complete communities. One thing I do have a question about is we're looking at two thousand units. Is that enough density to support like a grocery chain to come in and support that community considering like grocery stores are downsizing and closing themselves out?
I would just say that, you know, the two thousand units are new units. This is in the context of a much larger neighborhood that has, as we saw from the numbers on the slide, has many, many residents, many households. And so I think, you know, we we never know what the market analyses of grocery stores are, but it seems like this would, this has the right levels of densities between what the new development that we opportunities that would be created and the existing density in the area.
It might look different. Like it may not be a big box store. It may have a bodega feel, like if you've been in New York, right? Like grocery stores with fresh foods closer to proximity and access to folks. I'm just, I'm thinking about how we can truly serve folks, like easing those restrictions is great. But like making it a reality that like you could pull in the the things that folks need in their communities.
I think it'll ask. Pardon me, sorry. Yeah, I'll just ask staff to correct me if I'm saying anything wrong here, but I think we also do have in the zoning built in some incentives for certain kinds of uses, particularly like grocery stores. Recognizing that sometimes there's needed incentive to really attract those kinds of uses.
Thank you.
Constable Nolan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to extend the conversation that Constable Simpson started just a little bit further. You talked about, you presented this as a, with a goal of a fully developed walkable neighborhood. And I'm having a tough time reconciling allowing services or venues that at least currently are auto trip generators. Like grocery stores, it's great if I live two blocks from the grocery store and can walk there. But if a grocery store is going to survive or a place of assembly is going to survive, it's going to have to pave paradise to accommodate people who come to it via individual cars. And I am seeing some friction between that reality and the goal you've you've set up. So help help me understand how you get around that or how you mitigate the temptation to encourage more auto trips, which is not what we should be doing in that neighborhood.
Yeah, so I'll I'll start out by saying that the city, obviously consistent with state laws and more recent changes with state laws, has no minimum parking requirements, right? So there's no parking required for any uses in this area. Also, I believe we do have some parking maximums. So there would be you know, projects would not be able to propose more parking than is allowed by those maximums in the in the zoning regulation. So that's a couple of things. And also, I think, you know, we have demonstrated history with streetcar and the way in which people use streetcar and that there is a high preponderance of non car households, households that don't have cars in streetcar area. And there's no reason for us to to expect that there would be something, anything different about that. So I think the combination of all of these things really point to the fact that it's it's unlikely that we're going to see, you know, high, high levels of parking and high auto use in the area. And also, just, you know, transportation modeling was done for this project to understand what the impacts would be of this growth on the street network overall. So we feel pretty confident that the levels of density and growth that would be allowed by this plan are can be accommodated by the the street network and the planned transportation improvements that would accompany the the growth.
I might follow up. Can we explore that just a little bit more? I like your optimism and you talk again about we have no reason to believe that increased driving would occur. What tools, and I'll ask this of you and Glenn and Nathan, or who else do we have from OMA here? Roger, I thought I saw Roger come in. Are there either restrictions or in the public benefits agreement mechanisms by which the public can assure that the development there serves the walkable community and doesn't become a place that that attracts and maybe you don't have minimum requirements, but does the developer say I want more parking spaces than we would think is compatible with a walkable neighborhood? What are the tools that the city and or Metro have to ensure that that's the case, not just hope that that's the case?
Well, I might just start by saying that there, we do have transportation demand management requirements in the plan. And can I kick that over to you, Ryan, to talk a little more?
So the there are, there's a TDM regulations that would require residential uses to building managers to adopt a preapproved off the shelf TDM plans, which I believe we have PBOT and and we've worked with them on those. They also can develop custom plans. And the TDM, the preapproved plans require education information about walking, bicycling and transit be available in the in the building. Multimodal incentives, so a financial incentive for transit, bicycling and walking to tenants and employees. These could include low cost transit passes, car share memberships, bike walk incentives or other benefits that can shift travel behavior. And then also requiring them to do surveys, participate in surveys that monitor how well these strategies are working and so they can be adjusted over time. So we have a, we have a program. Barry is more that I'm missing on this.
And I could also just add very quickly that the PBOT will be working on a proactively managing on street parking and developing a parking district with metered on street parking that would support and complement all the other provisions that we just talked about. And also, there are restrictions on surface parking lots.
Sure. I Barry Manning, I'm a planner with the Bureau of Planning Sustainability, one of the project staff. Just wanted to add to what Patricia just said and what Ryan just said. We, in addition to what they've mentioned, the code does provide more stringent, if you will, parking limitations in terms of the ratios that are allowed in this district than more akin to what we allow in the central city, which is, I'm looking towards my colleagues at Portland Bureau of Transportation, which are more stringent, allow less parking. The ratios are much tighter in those areas. And as Patricia just mentioned, particularly around the streetcar within blocks around the streetcar, which is by and large, much of the district. There are limitations on surface parking, so the cost of providing parking spaces will be higher since they'll need to be underground or in a structure, which will limit thought to limit some of developments, choices in terms of, you know, providing vast areas of parking. So I think we've applied things that we've typically applied in other transit oriented areas where we've got high capacity transit to try to limit the impacts of auto trips. And one of the ways to do that is through parking regulations.
Good to know. It could be a, it could be a template. Great, thanks.
Constable Gonzalez.
Thanks, Deputy President Wong, and good morning, folks. Thank you so much for coming to Metro, sharing the plan with us. We we did have the opportunity to overview some stuff beforehand in preparation for today, so it's been great. You know, I think in the in the context of the built environment, I I do best with examples. And when I was looking over the proposal and the renderings and the images, the the Slap Town example, I mean, came to mind very close. I have a friend that lives in Slap Town. My sister lives very close to Slap Town. She just moved there from from Cornelius, so she's really enjoying the city life as a as a young twenty year old. The days, you know, the days. Anyway, you know, when I think about Slap Town, I think of a lot of the things folks have mentioned. I mean, there's a grocery store there. It does have onsite parking, but very limited footprint to what I'm used to in Hillsborough and Beaverton. Which I prefer more grocery stores look like that, by the way. So I like the the work. And I guess if my my question is, in terms of the built environment, do you feel like that's a fair comparison to the success that you want to build into this area?
Yes, I would I would say that that that's probably a model that you can think of visually when you think of the area, but I would like to point out that that area the Slap Town area predates the inclusionary housing requirements. And so there wasn't really the ability to capture inclusionary housing in Slap Town area, but we have the opportunity to do that here and we've really been trying to harness that.
All right, great. You're going to go into my next, to the next segment of my of my comment slash question here was, which was to talk about the affordability. And so great to hear that, I mean, and and to have been able to understand the plan, see the work to make sure that's a central component, anti displacement. I know that there's also understand the plan, see the work to make sure that's a central component, uh anti-displacement. I know that there's also uh um when I, when I was looking at the map, there's a a mention of a, of a green corridor, a green trail or something like that through that area as well, which I think is a um uh, a great standard for just urban design, urban development. And uh, you know, here on the council, uh, if you know, we're going through an urban growth report process, which you know, we're constantly assessing the need for housing. And this leads into my uh, uh, a last question, which is um, as, as a uh Washington County representative, one of the things that is on the docket of my constituent interests a lot is is industrial land. And um, uh, I'm wondering how, how you feel or the city feels this might uh, impact uh industrial land supply or encroachment into industrial land supply. How, how, how would you respond to that from a regional perspective? Considering we're going through this process, we're, we're continuing to look at places for, for folks to have jobs. And and I know that you're thinking about that in this plan, but for the sake of the, the hypothetical question, I'd love for you to, to, to share and answer a little bit. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah. First of all, just as you just said, just want to re- reiterate.
Of course.
Um, the plan really focuses, um, you know, initial versions of the plan really skewed much more to housing and later uh revisions to the plan really kind of brought back the need to, to have both a jobs and a housing focus. So I just really want to share that. Um, wanted to share some statistics. Um, you know, the, the city as a whole, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my the city as a whole has one second, please, sorry. I was just reading this on the way here and um so the city as a whole has about fourteen thousand acres of industrial land. Um, the, this area represents a very small portion of that industrial land. Um, it would only really change um the, the zoning and the comp plan change of thirty-four acres of industrial land for the the city's plans. Um, and that represents really only about three percent of the industrial yeah, less than one percent, but three percent of the industrial capacity of um of, of the harbor and airport district um industrial land, which is um a, a subset of industrial land in that area. So we really feel like this is just a, for the benefits, the overall benefits that could be achieved through uh this plan, that this is a, a, a very small area of industrial land that we're talking about.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks. Um, and you know, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney or lawyer or anything like that. And I know that uh um, sometimes the, the word highest and best use is, is used in different contexts. But I think what, and and I want to echo something Counselor Nolan said before this, that you know, a template for what could be a best practice. And in general, I don't, I don't even know where I'm going with this, but I, I know where I'm going with it. But you know, I think that what you've done with this project is we're just constantly asking the question of you know, where can we bring more housing and what is the best use of this areas? As, I mean, as this area has really changed, I think, over the last fifteen, twenty years from, from what I've seen and what I've been able to experience there. And and I think that this is definitely, it, it feels like a, a good, a good direction, a good, a good trade-off, I guess, essentially for for, for um, for what, for what is happening there. And uh, in general, um, you know, uh, um, you know, with, with Congressman Blumenau- Blumenauer coming back to Portland uh very soon and uh, having been able to hear him be in, in, in the city, talking about uh the streetcar project and, and his vision for his excitement for it has also been really really compelling to, to continue to see the growth of this investment in, in our um, i- i- in the city. So uh, from a Washington County rep uh that is out in Beaverton, I just want to say uh, well done and uh, it feels well put together. Thanks.
Uh, I see Counselor Lewis online.
Sure. Thank you so much. Um, unfortunately, I need to step inside to the OCBA here in just a minute, but wanted to voice my support for council taking action in alignment with a very thoughtful and good uh development plan. Uh, streetcar is an interesting tool because not only is it unlocking transportation options, it is also helping um, make sure that we're planning uh the community uh so that it is walkable. And I just want to flag that the one use that I haven't heard raised today, um, which I think is completely inappropriate when it is planned um or placed next to uh any transit option is um storage units. So just wanted to make sure that I get that on the record that we will be doing this not to um let people take the streetcar to storage units, but instead take streetcar to uh work, to home, uh, to uh services that need to be located close to home. So I am enthusiastic uh moving forward and appreciate everybody's uh bringing this to council for us to stew on before an ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Have a great meeting. Um, you know, just as we plan ahead, and you know, it's an opportunity to kind of create a new neighborhood from scratch. And I'm just wondering uh, what kind of like future-proofing elements are you all considering? That's like a a term, you know, we just went through a pandemic, you know, we're dealing with um, you know, climate change, like yeah, like how, how do we make sure this is a, the neighborhood we want, we want to be in the next you know, fifty to a hundred years? And I'm thinking of things like you know, uh, district energy or something like that. Are there any like thoughts or plans around that?
Yeah. Um, yeah, we haven't done district energy, but I, I, I will say that I think studies have shown, um, you know, as we've evaluated the impacts of the pandemic, areas that have a healthy balance between residential and non-residential uses have um recovered more quickly and didn't suffer as greatly. Um, so when you con- contrast some of the central city districts, for example, with other areas of the city, there was actually the other areas of the city where you had greater balance of housing and other uses really were more resilient. And so um, to that end, I think this, this plan is both already nested in a pretty mixed-use neighborhood and, and contribute and, and can continues that pattern of development in a way that I think um makes it very resilient for, in the future.
Again, Barry Manning. Uh, the other thing I'd add to what Patricia uh mentioned is that the the plan does include what we're calling green features and green elements. So I think uh, we're thinking about resilience and, and uh uh, climate a- as this plan evolves, it, it includes provisions that we've uh included in recent code updates uh that were informed by uh more recent developments in climate and built-in, and we're taking those tools and applying them here. So um, either eco roofs or landscaping required. So we expect to see a greener, uh, more resilient district overall.
Um, it seems like there was general support for uh bringing a can, uh, potential ordinance forward.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get a thumbs up or thumbs down, colleagues. Okay.
Great. So uh, staff will draft an ordinance to amend the Title IV map to remove the designations um with some recommendations on how doing so might help to advance certain policies of the regional framework plan. And we can um aim to bring that uh to the council after um some preliminary meetings with MTAC and M Act as necessary, but hopefully uh later this calendar year. Thank you very much for your patience on this topic.
Does that work with a city's timeline?
Yeah, that works with the city's timeline. And we've been coordinating very closely with metro staff. Really want to thank this uh metro staff for all of their engagement and support on this. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing this compelling vision and thanks for visiting.
All right, we'll move on to our next item of business. Uh, councilors, you may recall that back in twenty twenty-one, the Oregon Legislature passed the Recycling Modernization Act, a landmark uh piece of legislation that provided new tools for recycling and waste reduction several policy tool known as extended producer responsibility. Prior to the passage of the act, metro staff ensured uh, our statewide policies were cognizant of and incorporated metro values and the themes and goals of our regional waste plan. As local governments and industry partners work toward implementation of the Recycling Modernization Act in July of twenty twenty-five, our staff have continued to play a key role in statewide rulemaking and collaborating with the Producer Responsibility Organization uh Circular Action Alliance. So here today to share more about where we are in the implementa- implementation process. Uh, we have Thomas uh Eccleston, Policy and Program Development Manager, and Joe Heritzic, uh, Program Manager. Welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Wong. Uh, councilors, it's great to be with you again this afternoon. Two weeks in a row for uh the Policy and Program Development Team, so we're happy to have your attention and your time. As Deputy Council President mentioned, I'm joined by Jill Heritzic and I am Thomas Eccleston and the Policy Program Development Manager for the Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Department. And I use he/him pronouns. Next slide, please. A quick overview before I hand it off to Jill for some content and then I'll pick up after that. Uh, pick my face in the mic, so. A quick overview of the presentation today. We're going to provide a brief overview of the act uh from twenty twenty-one, the Recycling Modernization Act. We will also um hit on uh the latest on the recycling acceptance list, which is a really hot topic in our region. Uh, we'll talk about the timeline for implementation of the act, then we'll step back and think about what this means for metro. Uh, and then we'll talk about next steps and have some discussion questions for you. Next slide, please.
Okay. Thank you and good morning. My name is Jill Heritzic. I'm a Program Manager in Waste Prevention and Environmental Services and I use she/her pronouns. So um, the following slides here are actually from the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQs, so recycling them per se, so uh, to save some time on this. And just to give a, we're always giving a brief overview about this law because no matter how many times I've explained it or I hear about it, I always learn something new every time. So thanks, Tom. Okay, so um briefly, what happened? The Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act was signed into law in twenty twenty-one and those changes go to effect starting July first, twenty twenty-five. And the covered items for the Recycling Modernization Act include packaged items, paper products and food service ware. Next slide, please. And what led to this? Well, in twenty eighteen, China stopped accepting a lot of our used paper and plastic and that caused a sort of recycling reckoning in our industry. And we started recognizing that there were unstable markets and um we weren't sure how these items were being managed. And we also were recognizing too that the rate payers have been paying for these costs for recycling and it hasn't, the producers haven't played a role in this. Um, and there's been confusion over recycling and then overall just um erosion of public trust. You might often hear of where is our recycling going? Is it even getting recycled, right? Next slide, please. So what does this look like? So uh, we did pass this in twenty twenty-one. I'm excited to share that California.
Great slide. I'm sorry. I can't. I've never felt more Oregon-y in my life.
I will pass that on to DEQ too, because I think that's a huge compliment also for DEQ to come up with this slide as well. It is the Oregon way. We also have Maine, California, Colorado and Minnesota, actually this year just signed on to these producer responsibility programs. So what makes it the Oregon way? Um, we call this a shared responsibility system. And so I'll go into a little bit more of what those players mean. But a big part of this too is that we're going to have one statewide list of where our recycling can go and producer responsibility. So producers are, of these items are going to be paying into the system to cover new startup costs, expanding these services, developing the education and outreach materials. Next slide, please. And most importantly, plastic pollution is at the front of the name of this act. And so what this also means too is that we have more transparency and regulation of where these items are going to ensure that they are being um managed socially and environmentally recycled responsibly. Next slide, please. So there's some, some new faces, some old faces in the system. Local governments will continue working with the service providers to ensure that recycling is being collected. Um, that is going to expand across the state. Um, that's where we are as local governments. Um, and then there's new players that are coming in, and that is the producers. And the producers will form an organization. It's called the Producer Responsibility Organization. And so we'll hear that term pro used quite a bit, pro or P R O. They pay those fees into the Producer Responsibility Organization and then they are the ones that actually lead in developing that program plan and um the implementation of that process. And DEQ oversees this entire project and um, or this law. And starting with this law going into effect is a new Oregon Recycling System Advisory Council. We call it the Recycling Council for short. Um, I actually serve on that recycling council. It's a statewide council with um all the players above plus community partners. And we advise on those program plans and give feedback to um DEQ and that Producer Responsibility Organization. Next slide, please. So moving forward, there's going to be two types of recycling list. Um, so I don't know if this is always a public-facing name for it just yet. We'll see what the pro develops, but the first one is called the Local Government Acceptance List, and that is the Uniform Statewide Collection List. And this is pretty much what goes into our recycling bin when you put it out for recycling. And then the second item is called the Pro Recycling Acceptance List, which is items that are harder to manage and that will actually be on the Producer Responsibility Organization to figure out how that will be um managed, collected, recycled. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's see. Um, this is the Uniform Statewide Collection List as of now. So this does not look too different from the Portland metro region. Um, however, this is a really large expansion for the rest of Oregon. I will also note that when we shared this with you last October, we were very excited about a couple, a few items being added to the list, and that was coffee cups, plastic cups, Pringles cans. Um, but unfortunately, before first rulemaking, I went to the Environmental Quality Commission. We learned that they had been removed because there were concerns about processing facilities that couldn't manage the materials and a few community partners expressed concerns about um deterring reuse. So we know that there are capabilities to process and responsibly recycle these materials. And as you know, through our metro or regional waste plan, we know that the path to reducing plastic pollution involves both recycling and reuse. So we are currently providing that key feedback to both DEQ and the Producer Responsibility Organization to urge adding these items back in in a timely manner. Next slide, please. So the pro acceptance list, this is um, this is what the items that are harder to manage that the producers will be responsible for figuring out how to collect and manage. Um, few items to call out here. One is aerosol cans, pressed aluminum foil products and shredded paper have been on our recycling bin list. It has been a little confusing, I feel like, to the public to know about what to do with some of that stuff like foil and aerosol cans. That it's being proposed, that it's being moved. We're asking for it to be added back on to the Uniform Statewide Collection List as long as there is um, processing equipment that is able to process it and there's responsible in markets, which we know there is. Let's see, we, oh, and the other one to point out too is glass bottles and jars. Most of the state does not collect glass bottles and jars en route in that separate bin like we do in our region. But um, the cities and counties are working with the Producer Responsibility Organization in our region to, to, about continuing to collect that en route at the curb, at home, at multifamily properties. And also for this, so for the Producer Responsibility Organization to collect these items, that means that there needs to be set up a certain amount of collection points that DEQ has identified. And right now they've identified forty-three collection points in the metro region, over a hundred in the state. And so that's actually pretty exciting because when we think about polystyrene styrofoam, before it was just being sent to Aglix. We had it at South for a little bit, but moving forward, there will be several dozens of collection points in our region for be able to drop this off. And drop-off can look like retail store drop-off, or it could look like depots, community uh depots, drop, drop-off depots. And so we'll go into a little bit more of that of metro's role and how we'll be playing more of a role in that system with um the facilities. Next slide, please. And this is from DEQ two. This is the, the timeline of where DEQ is at. So in twenty twenty-four, we are wrapping up second rulemaking right now. We're submitting those comments very soon. Um, we also submitted feedback on the first um draft program plan that the Producer Responsibility Organization sent. Um, the equity study and the multifamily study are underway. And pretty much the goals of this is really to get second rulemaking approved by the Environmental Quality Commission and for DEQ to approve that uh draft for, uh, for the program plan so that we're ready to go starting July first, twenty twenty-five. Next slide, pass it to Tom.
Thank you, Jill. Um, I'm going to take a step and change direction a little bit and talk a little bit about what this means for metro specifically. So next slide, please, Connor. So I, just before we get into this, I, I think in a higher level context, it's really important to think about. in a higher level context, it's really important to think about what this means for Metro in the landscape of extended producer responsibility programs. So just on the slide here is a quick overview of the programs we have in Oregon. The Bottle Bill in 1971 was, is credited as one of the first producer responsibility programs in the, in the nation. And it's kind of a different than what the modern program is, but it is still supported and funded mostly by the distributors and producers of beverages. In 2007, the state adopted the Oregon E-Cycles Program, which is an extended producer responsibility program. And then we added paint, prescription drugs, the Recycling Modernization Act in 21. And then recently last, this legislature adopted the mattress stewardship program, which goes effect into next year as well. Excuse me. I, I think it's important to call these out because these programs are changing the dynamic for how waste is managed in our communities. Traditionally, waste is solely managed and funded by local governments and the rate payers in those local communities. And this dynamic really changes that equation and it requires and asks producers to come in and share responsibility for their discards. And it really is kind of allowing for new innovations, new funding opportunities, and allowing local governments to look into other areas of work, maybe more upstream work, focus more on reuse and worry less about the responsible management of the discards that are coming out of these products. Next slide, please. So what does RMA mean for Metro? I think we are pretty confident that the Recycling Modernization Act is advancing our regional waste plan goals and our council priority targets, specifically reducing plastic pollution. There's some pretty ambitious plastic recycling goals that 70% of plastics is responsibly recycled by 2050. 2050 sounds like a really long time away, but there's some steps to get there in the, in the process. It also, as Jill mentioned, just the specificity in this law, in Oregon's law about responsible end markets is very stringent. And it's the strongest one in the nation right now. And we are requiring some pretty specific reporting and accountability for those markets that manage the materials so that we know that they aren't ending up in places that don't have the systems or the capacity to manage them responsibly. And then finally, there's also some living wage job provisions in the act that are pretty groundbreaking as well. The act actually requires workers at recycling facilities, so facilities that sort recycling to get paid living wages. And those living wages were defined in rulemaking as using some MIT living wage calculators and resulted in about $25 an hour for a recycling facility worker who was certainly either attempt and making minimum wage right now in those facilities. So it's a pretty significant step in the right direction in terms of living wages in the solid waste system as well. Next slide, please. Another area that this act is really moving the needle is advancing community drop off depots. As Jill mentioned, the Producer Responsibility Organization is required to establish a robust depot network. So 43 collection points in the metro region. I've heard them, DQ say, as accessible as the post office is how a recycling depot should be. It also, and that regards those items on that Producer Responsibility Collection List. So the styrofoams, the rigid plastics, the shredded paper, the aerosols, the aluminum foils, and those types of things. One other thing that's really important for an organization like Metro and our solid waste system is that existing facilities in this act have the first opportunity to participate as a depot. So we are managing two solid waste facilities at South and Central. And then we also work with our private industry partners in the region. Have about 14 permitted solid waste facilities in the region. And we're working closely with the Producer Responsibility Organization to bring these depots and, and their support into those facilities to improve access at our existing facilities. And we also understand that the act will allow us, if any new facilities are created or new facilities come online, that they would incorporate the, the Producer Responsibility Organization into helping support the collection of these materials at those facilities. Also, it is important to note here that this complements the, the drop off depots that are envisioned in the system facilities plan. It doesn't replace them. If you think about what items are talking about in the system facilities plan, it goes from household hazardous waste all the way down to a small self haul. We're really talking about those specific items on the, on the Producer Responsibility List. But it is definitely a complimentary piece there. Next slide, please. Yeah, please.
Is there a timeline for when the PROs have to start establishing these drop off centers? What, what's their, what's their timeline on this?
Yeah, so the act currently goes into effect on July 1st, 2025. So they should have some up by then, but they have until the end of the first plan period. So July 1st of 2027 to have met the convenience standard in the current. Actually, they have two years to kind of work up towards it.
Start, start next year and then have two years to complete. Okay.
Another role Metro plays a lot in this act means for Metro is we are working closely with our state and regional partners and collaborating and coordinating together. So Jill mentioned her participation on the statewide recycling council. We actually convened here at Metro this last meeting at the really nice office meeting room you all have on the third floor here. We are also participating in rulemaking advisory committees. DQ has hosted two of those and Metro has participated in both those committees. We're working closely with our city and county partners to make sure that we're collaborating together and we're advocating together for our community. We're also working with community partners that serve on the advisory committee and also are not, have the benefit to serve on those committees. We've convened with our solid waste facilities, trying to talk about the depot networks and how we're going to build out together. And then we're working closely with the Producer Responsibility Organization, which has been mentioned is Circular Action Alliance is the organization that has submitted a plan. So next slide, please. A little bit about next steps here, this is kind of a busy slide, but to kind of walk through it. We have three areas that we're working in kind of alongside each other, rulemaking. Jill mentioned that we are, DQ is about to wrap up the second rulemaking for this work. And we expect the Environmental Quality Commission to approve those rules at the end of this calendar year. We're going to continue working with the Circular Action Alliance, which is the Extended Producer Responsibility Organization. We're working with them right now on what is being called a needs assessment. So they're really asking what we need to improve or expand at our facilities and how much that might cost. We're providing feedback on their proposed plans. We expect in early next year to be engaged in negotiations with them as essentially a service provider for, as a depot operator at our facilities at South and Central. And then we, we'll see them start their program plan in the middle of next year. And then communication and education is running parallel to this. They're responsible to get out some initial draft materials towards the end of this year. And then we're going to be working together on collaboration and developing collateral as we get into next year and launch the program in, in July. Next slide, please. Here's a couple of discussion questions. I'll just leave up here. We're happy to answer any questions y'all might have and I'm excited for the next chapter in this act. Thank you. Thank you. Alex, any questions?
Counselor Rosenthal.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Just a question. One of the things that we're considering is expanding the number of regionalization of some of the reuse and recycling facilities. I would be worried perhaps that these might not be complete service facilities. In other words, because the PRO might establish something nearby in addition to. In other words, do we have a mechanism? Is it just through coordination? That these could be serving, you know, not just the reuse and recycling, but also sort of depots at the same time? And how do we make sure that, that they, they work in lockstep?
Yes, very good question. So the act does include a provision that basically says the PRO must coordinate or offer to work with existing solid waste facilities before they put something else in on their own. So that's one thing that's there. That covers kind of our existing facilities in South and Central. Our interpretation of the act also says that existing facilities is defined as a facility that's been permitted to collect solid waste at the time of the program plan submittal. So they'll submit a new plan in 2027 and then again, a new plan five years later. So if new facilities come online later down the road, the, we understand that they'll be obligated to work together with us on that facility. So that's, I think, the legal background of it. It's also functionally, they are really worried about those convenient standards. Forty-three sites in the metro region is a big lift and there's difficult citing them, trying to understand what type of permitting requirements they would have. So they're really eager to work with us and they want us to help basically them find locations. And at our facilities are a first priority for them. Thanks.
It might be too early, but can you talk about potential like fiscal impacts, especially to our, to the W-PAS budget as these scenarios play out? It just seems like, you know, we're taking on more responsibilities regionally. But, you know, what, what are the mechanisms for being able to pay for those added services?
Yes, this is a really good question. Hesitate, speculate too much. The, the numbers that they are proposing to invest in the state are pretty large, like a couple hundred million dollars over the next three or four years in expanding the producer responsibility list. Now, how much of that would come to Metro is a very good question. We don't have a good figure on that. I think we're kind of taking the general approach of underpromising and overdelivering because the, their responsibility is really narrowly focused on these subset of materials. And some of the conversations we're having about facility access is in a much broader spectrum of materials. So they, I think they'll certainly be part of the equation and it will help reduce the overall operating costs of running a facility like that. But putting that specific number on it is really hard to do at this time. We're currently collecting and working with our ops teams to collect like, how much time do we think it's going to take to unload them in and drive the forklift to the trailer and load the trailer? And this is an activity that they're going to fund us for presumably. So we're trying to pull together numbers and figures and get some preliminary data for our existing facilities to understand how much that might offset some of our costs on our mixed solid waste activities. So it is, it's a non-answer, but it's, we're, we're really focused on it. We're really trying to, to, to think about all the opportunities and, and abilities to work together and synergy.
And would that kind of come out through like competitive grants?
Well, they're, so they're required to work with existing facilities and they're required to cover our costs up to 110% of what their cost would be. So if they could do it for a hundred dollars and we can do it for a hundred and $10, they're required to work with us first in, in a certain facility location.
And just on the potential 43 depot is like, how, how large is a depot? When you were saying as accessible as a post office, would they be like post office sized or are they? Like, what would it take to?
All right, that's where the Producer Responsibility Organization needs to get creative. And that's, that's where it can be a myriad of ways of what a drop off location could be. It has to be free and available to the public. It has to have consistent operating hours and it needs to be available at least like on one weekend day. And that could be a retail store drop off. Another area we were looking at too is collection events. So while they're building out and identifying more collection points, they could also use collection events, like going to the Intel parking lot, hosting a big collection event to collect these items. And so essentially what they will do is they have to figure out what can be, how they can meet 43 collection points, whether that's through retail store drop off, the community type of recycling depots, or the, or the collection events, myriad other ways too. And then, and then they present that to DEQ and DEQ will determine if that meets their collect, their convenience standards.
An important distinction that Jill mentions 43 collection points, that's for each item on that list. So theoretically, there could be six times 43 collection points for different things. Like you could take your film here and your styrofoam here, and that's not what we want in our system. Our community has been pretty clear. They want to be able to go to one place and bring everything they need to get rid of there responsibly. So they don't have to drive around doing that. And, and Circular Action Alliance shares that vision. We will see some return to retail. I think film plastic in particular, like there's a lot of opportunities that they see in grocery store entryways where they could beef up their film collection. But some of that is not very compatible with return to retail. So it's going to be a mishmash and especially early on when they're trying to scrambling to meet those standards as quickly as they can.
Would we see some of these at like public parks or libraries, like?
Yeah, I, I'm sure if the library would be willing to let them put a, some depot bins on their property, they would love to have that. They're, they're, they're looking for every opportunity, I think, that they can.
They're also talking to the Oregon, to O B R C, like the Oregon Bottle Cooperative. They're looking, talking to them too, just trying to figure out creative ways. Because if they have drop off locations for that, there might be some areas where they could add an additional bin.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez.
Thanks, Deputy President Wong. While I can't support this enthusiastically enough, if that makes any sense. I'm really happy to see, one, the progress that we're making as a state in this area. And two, that Metro and our W-PAS staff has been able to play a leadership role in implementation, but also design. And even I'm sure back to when recycling policy leaders were first streaming up what a concept might look like for growing EPR in the region. So I want to start there and, you know, I, I know that we're having some general conversations around like, you know, what, what barriers might there be to implement? What obstacles might we confront? Whether that's, you know, different competing interests with other government partners, other industry partners. But I think the benefit that will come to us as one residents of, of the region and also our ability to, to lead on, on improving our recycling systems, diversion, preventing contamination of things, I think is going to vastly outweigh the, the hurdles that we're going to overcome. So I just want to highlight that I feel, I feel great about, about the work that's happening here. I don't, I don't have any questions there. I, I want to also acknowledge that we have a really wonderful partnership with, with DEQ. You know, at J-PAC, we have a DQ rep who they always attend. They're always there, always present. And it's, it's just that I feel really confident about the work that we have coming ahead. We've had the opportunity to, to work with our W-PAS staff on understanding potential investments in, 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 in facilities and sites that are regional. And, and I think, again, we need these investments like ASAP. So I'm happy to hear it. I'm also, I'm also really glad that we acknowledge in the presentation, you know, the sense of eroding and, and, and public trust in the recycling system. And that's definitely something that I would love to work with our staff to continue to just be able to provide the right information, advance the right narratives. Because there's a lot of, I think, a lot of sinister messaging out there that goes to undermine the, the benefits that this has for our environment. And so anyway, that's a, that's a whole nother topic. But I wanted to make sure I was really clear and emphatic about my support and, and keep it up.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Gonzalez. I think the public trust and the confidence that when we recycle something, it goes to a place that's, it's handled and managed responsibly. And it is recycled is kind of the core tenet of our, of what we're getting out of this as a state and as a community. And I, and that's what we're leading with that conversation, definitely in our communications. Love it. Counselor Rosenthal.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. First of all, convenience, I wanted to, I agree with Counselor Gonzalez. Look forward to this rolling out. As we all know, people love convenience. And of course, you know, Oregon, and I think Fred Myers, I would say started, but certainly capitalized on the one stop shopping. And now we want to look for one stop disposal where people can get, do many things at one time. My question, I guess, is we're having, we're going to have these depots and there could be different models for these depots and they could be different. They could either be fully complete or they could be partial. They're going to be in different cities. How is the coordination with the different cities going to occur? And are we going to be sort of sitting at the table with these cities to talk about it? Or are we going to be establishing some general rules for this? Because every city has different zoning ordinances, different restrictions and different parking, different road access and things like that. So I'm just worried about the actual practical implication, implementation in 24 cities.
Yeah, that's a really good question and that elevates the, their desire to work with existing facilities. Because all the things you mentioned are going to be big hurdles to overcome. The convenience standard is written into the act and it requires a certain number of locations within each city based on a certain population. And it's like a 15 minute or 15 mile radius. So there is, there's, it's kind of a geographic spread that's built into the act. So each city over a certain population will get, you know, X amount of depots. And when we were advocating for the rulemaking one, we were talking about the large urban unincorporated areas we have in the metro region and considering those and making sure there's access in those areas as well. So it is kind of set up as a formula in the rules for the act. And so that, the challenge that the Circular Action Alliance is going to have is to take that formula and apply it to the region and try to find the depots and/or sites or locations in those zones that meet that convenient standard. So it's going to be really interesting to see how it plays out. And, and again, that really emphasizes their desire to work with the existing facilities and the existing infrastructure. Because that's going to be their, that's going to be like the, the bedrock of that depot network and, and brings in all those things that are one stop shop more, more than a, as a one off or an individual depot does.
And, and how it will work with convening too? And, and how it will work with convening too is the revised program plan um will be coming in this fall. That'll go more into detail about what this looks like and how they're gonna be establishing these networks. And um, serving on the Recycling Council, I work with the local governments, um, community partners, industry, everybody to review that, to provide them feedback to.
There will be challenges with zoning though. It's something we flagged early on. There's um, you know, but citing a bottle drop depot as, is a challenge and Beaverton location was difficult to cite. There's some challenges in the North Port location. So there, we've, we've connect, they're connected with the O B R C, talking about their experience citing, you know, these type of facilities in the region and in the state. So this is, it is gonna be a big challenge though. Lots of different rules and regulations to navigate in regards to zoning and, and where these types of activities can occur.
Thanks. Councilor Nolan.
If I missed it, I'm sorry. So we've got depots that D Q will be creating, the twenty-three, right?
The Producer Responsibility Organization. So D Q is requiring them to create.
Okay.
Forty-three.
Forty-three around the state.
In Metro.
Metro.
Okay, that's better. Are they requiring them to staff them?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Twenty-four seven or whenever they're open? So they don't have to be open twenty-four seven?
I think one day, week, one weekend day and during normal out, operating hours, is that, Jill?
Right, it's uh, the, in the, in the rule, the first rulemaking, it is a certain, a number of business days and one weekend day.
I'm just interested in not having them become trashy.
Oh, yes.
On a, I mean, that is part of what makes them hard to, the O B C stuff for it to cite. Both that it needs to be maintained, but the difference also is that O B C, there is a value transaction. The people who bring their bottles and cans back get something of value. You don't get something of value, so you won't have, it will not attract the same the people motivated by some of the same reasons that the bottle and can recovery.
Yes, uh, the, our partners in the rest of the state of Oregon who have had these depot networks, this is relatively new, I feel like for our region, or it's a throwback to bring them back, the depot network. But in our state, we've definitely talked to our partners who have had those issues of whenever it's not staffed and the issues that they've seen. So that is an exciting part about the convenience standard is both operating hours and staffing to ensure that it's maintained and it's complying with D Q permitting of air quality.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, um, some of us just got briefed this morning about uh proposed depots for recycling that W P A S is anticipating. Could we ask Martin McGuire to come and explain how we'll coordinate this with, with the pro group? Um, so that we minimize consumer confusion?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, councilors. Tom covered this a little bit earlier and in part, I feel like the, the language is a little bit confusing as we talk about depots, because I, there's a spectrum of de- depots. I foresee the forty-three more as collection points potentially, because it's really focused on papers and plastic packaging. And when Jill mentioned the throwback, these were, depots was what was used in the past when we didn't have cur- curbside collection. So it's much more of a limited depot than the proposal that has come out of the system facilities plan, which is a multi-material, one-stop, addressing the gaps that we have in the system, both plastic and packaging, those curbside materials, but also building materials, household hazardous waste, self-haul garbage, reusable items, large furniture. Those are not being addressed through the proposed depots in this. So I think it's really important to distinguish between the big D depots and the, in the smaller kind of collection point depots for limited materials that are being proposed. So we are working in collaboration through the different venues that were articulated by um Jill and, and Tom and the presentation and with the producer responsibility organ- organizations as we move forward. There is an incentive for them to work with us becau- both for the existing facilities, because they're already built. We already have much of the materials in our current transport stations. You think about the bins when you go into Metro South and Central that are collecting these materials there. So there's a opportunity for them to partner with us, then they don't have to expend the cost to build something new. And as we narrow in on our path forward for the system facilities plan, that's something that we can share with the producer responsibility organizations as additional collection.
That's brilliant. That's great. Good. Thanks.
And I just, we pretty started those conversations. We've um asked, told them, informed them about the May twenty-first work session, provided them the um, the link to watch it. Um, S D and I met with them to talk about the system facilities plan and just trying to make sure that they understand the, the conversations happening here at the table.
So it's really a wonderful opportunity that all of these things, both the conversation that council is having with the region around looking at the future of our system and the implementation of the Recycling Modernization Act. So we have the opportunity to plan together for what we want the future to look like.
Great. Thanks for time, that all for me. Thanks.
Okay, same number of questions. Thank you, Harper. Great work. Looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on, uh, we now have time on our agenda to continue our conversation from last week about transportation priorities for this region heading into the twenty-twenty-five legislative session. Today, we have presenters from Transportation for America to present additional information about national trends and transportation funding and Trimestar to share additional information about transit funding invested, investment outlined in H P twenty seventeen. Today is also an opportunity for our councilors to comment on the draft set of transportation priorities for twenty-twenty-five. Um, so I wanna welcome Annalisa Curler, Legislative Affairs Manager, Catherine Shallow, your Planning Development and Research, Beth Osborne from Transportation for America, and Miles Penkley, Government Affairs Director at Trimestar. Welcome.
Thank you, um, councilors. I'm gonna go ahead and kick things off. If you want to advance to the next slide. My name is Annalisa Curler and I am your Legislative Affairs Manager. I use she/her pronouns. Um, as uh, uh, Councilor Huang alluded to, uh, today we are going to be continuing our informational presentations um to help you set your uh council priorities for a possible transportation package in twenty-twenty-five. We have um Miles here from Trimestar to talk about transit funding and then Beth Osborne from Transportation for America to talk about the national landscape of transportation funding. She is um on, on Zoom with us here. And then we'll have some time to talk about uh the draft council priorities that are included in your packet. Next slide, please. Before I turn it over to the uh information sessions, I just wanna review the process that we've laid out. So just a quick reminder um of what we're doing here today. We are wrapping up the second of two information work sessions with you. And then we will be moving into that discussion of draft priorities. We will have subsequent time in September and October to also discuss priorities before wrapping up that conversation for uh final adoption of Metro Council's legislative agenda in December. And with that, um, I'm gonna turn it over to the main event, which is our presenters. So Miles.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, Miles Penkley, I'm the Government Affairs Director for Trimestar. Um, I think we're getting our slides pulled up here. Um, I'm gonna give a brief overview of um the STIF program, um, the Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund. Um, when we talk about transit funding at the state level, uh, we're really talking about the STIF. Um, and then I will go into a little more detail about um how Trimestar has spent its stiff funds to date um in our funding needs for uh state funding in the metro region moving forward. So um, it's really hard to overstate how transformational the STIF has been in expanding uh their reach of, of transit and funding for transit in Oregon. It is the only state funding source that can be used for operations and maintenance for transit. Um, and that is vitally important, particularly for small and medium transit agencies around the state um that do not have an employer payroll tax like Trimestar does. Um, having that steady state source of funding um for operations and maintenance is, allows them to maintain the service they have and expand service um to new communities. And so um, this was instituted in the twenty-seventeen transportation package, Oregon's last transportation package. Um, it is a one-tenth of a percent employee payroll tax uh that is allocated across four programs. Uh, the bulk of that funding is allocated, about ninety percent is allocated to qualified entities and public transportation service providers around the state. Um, five percent of the program goes to inter-community transit, so connecting different cities and metro areas via transit. Uh, there's a competitive discretionary program, uh, which is primarily used for capital like new buses. Um, and then there's also a technical resources center set up at ODOT for um, to help transit agencies apply for grants and uh do some of their work. So, um, and then I also wanna mention um for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-five, um, it's increased fifty million dollars for elderly and disabled projects as well, which is a significant increase. Um, but really, you know, providing expanded access to jobs, uh, providing access to transit and transportation for people who previously didn't have it. Um, transit is statewide. It's not just a metro area thing. It looks different around the state. Um, we have fixed route service, like what you think of as bus service, but also dial-a-ride services for, for seniors and people with disabilities. Um, shuttle services that connect, um, you know, some more remote areas to fixed route service, which we have throughout the Portland metro area. Um, and, you know, it, it looks different in every community, but this program is helping every community in Oregon. Uh, next slide, please. So you can see here uh some numbers on the impact of about forty-six million miles of passenger service, forty million passenger trips. Uh, STIF, one of the important things that STIF did is a uh student pass program, a hundred and thirty thousand students with access to free or reduced fares through the program. Um, and it's allowed the purchase of over three hundred and fifty transit vehicles across the state since it, its creation. Uh, next slide, please. So I, I mentioned um inner-community transit, inner-city transit. Um, this is certainly a shortcoming of Oregon's publicly available transportation. As we've seen companies like Greyhound really recede in terms of the routes they provide, it becomes increasingly hard for people to get across the state and travel between different communities. So you can see here in blue, that is our current existing inner-city uh transit network. And in red are the STIF-funded routes. Those are either uh new routes or routes with uh increased frequency or expanded hours and days of the week of operation uh because of STIF funding. So a, a small portion of the funding statewide, but a really crucial service uh to Oregonians, especially those who live in more remote areas outside the Willamette Valley. Uh, next slide, please. So a- as I said, STIF and transit are statewide, so um, we wanted to spotlight a uh more remote area of the state. Um, it, STIF has really enhanced livability in uh Harney County. Uh, there is now free transit service between Burns High, uh Heinz and the Burns Paiute Reservation. Um, a Harney hub and the uh Burns Paiute Tribe also partnered to provide free transit outside of tribal transit service hours. So again, you know, when we're talking about expanding transit, we're not just talking about new routes. We're talking about expanding the hours of operation for routes, so people can access transit service around the clock and, and on weekends as well. Um, there is now a uh free fare transit connection to Bend, which is really important for those communities. And it's allowed them to replace older vehicles as well. So this is a really good example of um how stiff dollars have been put to work in communities around the state. Next slide, please. Yeah, it's no secret um that there was a significant drop in ridership uh of transit in, during the pandemic and in the wake of the pandemic. Um, as you can see on this graph here, the thing that I wanna highlight is that um, those transit services that are funded by STIF, um, we didn't see quite a sign, that's the red line that you'll see up in the graph. We didn't see quite as much of a drop in ridership for those defunded services. Um, and the, the pace of rebound has outpaced the recovery of ridership overall. And so uh this is really indicates that the services funded by STIF are very needed. They're being well utilized. Um, and they're filling a uh important gap in transit service across the state. Uh, next slide, please. So um, as we look ahead to the transportation package, um, these are a couple of, of the challenges and um tasks that we're looking to tackle with more transit funding. Um, one of those is that ridership is changing. Um, it, although ridership is down from pandemic levels, it is rebounding, but we're seeing changes in travel patterns. Obviously, people working from home. Um, where people are commuting and when they are commuting is changing. And so um transit providers across the state are working to change their service, to be more responsive to the needs of the communities they serve. New job centers where people are going to work and the hours and days of the week when people are traveling by transit. Um, Oregon has an aging population, so um, we have, we are going to have more riders to serve in future years. And we need to make sure that we have a level of service uh that meets that growing demand from older Oregonians. Um, we are also trying to reimagine what transit access looks like and improve um the equity of access to transit. Uh, both by serving communities that have previously been underserved by transit and making sure that the transit service we provide um matches the needs of those communities. Um, also, you know, as we think about uh affordable housing development in Oregon and the fact that a lot of that affordable housing is being developed in the outskirts of urban areas, um, making sure that um those new housing developments are accessible via transit and expanding service to those newly bu- built communities. Um, and then, you know, finally, um, as Trimestar is, um, providers around the state are transitioning to zero emission vehicles. Um, and these vehicles are more than twice the cost of a traditional diesel bus. And so it's important to keep in mind that um, while it's important that we are moving to zero emission vehicles in transit, um, there is a significant cost to do so above the cost of replacing these vehicles with, with new diesel vehicles. And um additional state funding is needed for that as well. Uh, next slide, please. So uh, now I'm gonna dive a bit into Trimestar's needs um and, and how we have been spending our STIF funding in the Portland region. Um, a- as I mentioned, it's a, STIF is a critical funding of operations and maintenance for transit providers across the state. Um, it is for Trimestar as well. Uh, while transit agencies get substantial federal funding, that's almost all capital funding for building new transit projects. And so STIF really fills a need to be able to pay our operators, maintain our vehicles and provide that service to our communities day in and day out. Um, it also can provide a, a helpful match for uh federal grants. Um, as we try to maximize the amount of federal infrastructure funding that we're drawing down the Portland region, uh STIF can help provide that key local match to uh be eligible for some of those grant programs. Um, so we, we invest STIF in a number of areas. I'm just gonna touch on the top three today. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a big one. Um, this is one of the mandates of the STIF program um is, is to provide uh low-income fare programs. Uh, we call that our Honored Citizen Program for Trimestar. We've had over sixty-four thousand Oregonians sign up for that program since twenty-eighteen. Um, and the way it works is um, you get a fifty percent reduced fare on a per fare basis. Um, if you use our hop card and we um have a number of programs to try to put hop cards in the, in the hands of everybody who wants one, um, that means that your service is capped, your, excuse me, your monthly cost of service is capped at twenty-eight dollars a month versus a hundred dollars a month for a typical fare. So seventy-two percent savings for people with a hop card um who have Honored Citizen. People qualified based on income, participation in existing low-income programs, um, age, uh, i- if they have Medicare, if they have disabilities and, and veterans and active duty military as well. Um, so the STIF is a key source of funding that enables us to provide that reduced fare program. Um, I mentioned youth passes earlier and STIF is an important source of funding for that. Um, we, we have uh, in the last several years, uh, we have stood up our summer youth pass program, which we're really excited about. That provides, uh, it's, it uses about six million dollars in stiff funds to provide free transit passes to students across the Portland metro area for the months of June, July and August. That's a hundred percent free. Um, and we also provide subsidized uh transit passes for high school students uh around the Portland metro area and to students at Portland Public Schools. Um, additionally, our access transit programs, we work with nonprofits, both Additionally, our access transit programs, we work with nonprofits both to give them reduced fares and free fares that they can make available to the communities they serve. And we work with nonprofits to get the word out and create connections with people who may be eligible for our low income fare program. Next slide, please. So this is something forward together is something that I think many of you have been briefed on before. But TriMet is still working on and in the midst of implementing the most in depth and comprehensive restructuring of our service in the agency's history. And the goal here is really what I talked about earlier, meeting more people where we see need. So we look at demand for rider in the form of ridership. We have a ten point equity index that we use to evaluate where there is high need for more transit service and we are reallocating our service with a focus on low income and disadvantaged communities in areas with a demand for more service. And you can see some of the metrics here. A hundred thousand more people are near service running on the weekend. We have fifty thousand more people who are near service overall. And we've increased the number of jobs reachable within forty five minutes by the median resident by forty five percent. And a lot of that is looking at i- if people, we were seeing reduced numbers, people commuting to and from downtown Portland during the nine to five, we're seeing an increased need for service to regional job centers in Troutdale, in the north industrial area, in Hillsborough, in other retail job centers like Clackamas Town Center. And so we're trying to provide more service and service throughout the day, seven day a week service to where people are going to work and and where we see people writing. Stiff has been tremendously helpful in providing that service. But certainly we have a need to expand service all over the Portland metro area. And and more stiff funding would be a crucial part of being able to fund that expanded service. Next slide, please. And I TriMet, as other transit agencies are doing across the state is transition, we have a goal of transitioning to a a hundred percent zero emission fleet by 2040. You can see one of our battery electric buses there. That's one of twenty four buses that have been purchased with stiff dollars. I'm always reminded that I I should share that TriMet takes the equivalent of three hundred and forty eight thousand cars off the road as is. But we want to maximize our contribution to transportation decarbonization by also running a hundred percent zero emission fleet. That cost for TriMet transitioning our seven hundred bus fleet to zero emission buses is about two billion dollars, which is double the cost of what it would be to replace those buses with diesel buses. And this stiff is a a essential source of funding for us to make that transition. Next slide, please. So in addition to the things that that I mentioned that we're spending stiff on, you are all aware of our Eighty Second Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Project. We want to do a similar similar project along TV Highway as well. And you all have seen the high capacity transit plans that have been put forward and kind of TriMet's twenty year plan for where else we want to span expand bus rapid transit on key corridors throughout the Portland metro area. You know, expanding service is very expensive. We have equipment costs. We have labor costs. We want to make sure operators are making good living wage. We continue to have challenges with recruiting enough operators and so stiff will be key to that service expansion. I mentioned our zero emission fleet transition and and just state of good repair. We have a large fleet. It is expensive to maintain. We have about a hundred and fifty million dollars in annual maintenance and equipment needs. And that may not be the most exciting investment of stiff, but it's certainly a crucial one to make sure that our buses and our service are reliable moving forward into the future. Next slide, please. So as you think about the 2025 transportation package, transit, I think, addresses a lot of the stated values of that package. So equity, obviously, car ownership is one of the most expensive costs for most households. We about thirty percent of Oregonians don't drive. And I I mentioned service to affordable housing. It's really important that we are providing access to transportation for everyone in this state, regardless of whether they live and regardless of whether they drive. Transit is a key way to do that. It's also statistically ten times safer than car travel. Obviously, there are a lot of different ways to that we need to address pedestrian safety and transportation safety and traffic violence. But getting more people out of single occupancy vehicles and onto transit is one way to do that. And climate, if you look at ODOT and the state of Oregon's climate plans and climate goals, they show that achieving our emissions reductions targets can't be achieved by switching to zero emission vehicles alone. There has to be mode shift and transit is a great way to move large groups of people at a speed that can be comparable to single occupancy vehicles, but with much lower emissions. And so TriMet is working with Metro or working with other regional government partners from the Portland region to advocate for transit as one of the investments that we would like the 2025 legislature to make as part of this package. Oh, and I'm supposed to turn it over to Beth Osborne with Transportation for America.
Thank you so much, and and thank you for including me today. My job is to give you all an overview of, you know, the the funding options and what's going on across the country in terms of funding transportation. You all are not alone in seeking additional funding. And so hopefully, this this gives you some indication that, you know, how different folks are handling it. So jumping to the next slide, we're gonna look at how states are investing in transportation, different methods they use, how they're making the case for that funding and working with USDAOT going forward. So next slide, there's actually some really good information that is available through the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, ASJO, on where funding comes from. And this is their breakdown is a little bit old, as you can see, because it goes back to 2016. But you should just assume that more and more funding is coming from general fund appropriations, particularly at the federal end. And you will see that because of the amount of money that is being transferred into the federal program, our next reauthorization is going to be quite a struggle in terms of filling that gap because that number has increased. And there's a large number of issue or of different funding sources that you can see here. And and under each of these titles are many different ways to raise funds for transportation. So jumping to the next slide, there is another lovely resource, actually, at the Reason Foundation, where they go through the different ways that every state in the Union funds transportation. And you can see here, two examples, a very simplified funding systems. You know, most of the funding comes from the fuel tax and there are a couple other funding sources, but it's a pretty streamlined and 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 small number of sources. If you go to the next slide, we will see the, oh, that's a, that's a shame. Somehow, it did not come through that I had layers upon layers of of funding options available from Texas. Texas has someplace along the lines of twenty five different sources that they use to fund transportation. Some are large, some, as you can see here, are quite small. And and some are very much connected to transportation and some are not at all connected to transportation. They have just made the case for a lot of different sources of funding to go into their trust fund. And I'm sorry, the animation didn't come from, come through. I'm a little concerned about what that means going forward in my presentation. Next slide. We also have done a report, this is actually relatively old now, I believe this is a ten year old report now, on all the different ways regions fund transit. And we we get into some things that were considered kind of cutting edge ten years ago. I'm sad to say, most of them are still cutting edge. I we, those things have not been adopted more widely like value capture and things like that, but it is as relevant today as it was then. And again, some folks use very transportation centric funding sources. And some, you know, do not. Some use general funds, some use property taxes and any number of things. On the next slide, and we'll see what happens with animation. Yeah. Okay, well, we'll see what, how this goes. What I wanted to make the point here is one of the things I really like about what Minnesota does is they have a website that gets into details about where their money comes from and where their money goes. And that is a powerful piece of making the case for getting more money from whatever source. Because the point that I want to make is if you're looking for the funding source that makes people more comfortable with parting with their tax dollars, you will not find it. It's really just a matter of getting people excited about how the money will be spent and then finding kind of where the zeitgeist of the moment is in your area. But there is really no example of particular funding sources at this point that give people more comfort. It used to be that a user fee was more comforting to the taxpayer. We are not finding that that is the case as much anymore. So moving on to the next slide, jump one more. We actually did some polling about a year ago now. And over ninety percent of those polled were very much only drivers, not not even just sometimes drivers, overwhelmingly suburban and rural respondents. And they really lost faith in the notion that if more capacity was added to highways, it would make their commute any more convenient. They had seen those promises. They had seen lots of money invested in those projects and had not seen that bear fruit. They had really just seen their commutes getting more difficult. And when asked what the best and worst long term solutions for reducing traffic in their area, they wanted to see more repair of their existing roads. You know, filling the potholes, really making the existing system easy to use, providing more options, building more things close to homes and and clustering development and things like that. And I think that's really useful as we interpret the way different kinds of funding initiatives have gone across the country. It used to be that you kind of put together everybody's favored projects across a region and you did a funding initiative and that's what worked. And now we're finding that people are a little more critical of of where the funding goes. And, you know, what used to be an easy sell just is not as easy a sell anymore. On the next slide, I give some examples of of some really interesting leadership that we're seeing in certain states, going back to Minnesota, that really just had a very active and innovative legislative session last year. They have both put in place a process where they evaluate their projects for greenhouse gas emissions. And where they see a project will increase greenhouse gas emissions, it needs to be paired with projects that will reduce emissions by the same amount. And, you know, they've had a lot of success with that and some projects are able to go forward and some are not. On the next slide, we've seen a a take up of this notion of measuring induced demand. This is the notion that if you add more free capacity, that it will be taken up unless you you have a down economy. And there have been calculators created, one by the University of California at Davis for Caltrans in California. But then also one created by Rocky Mountain Institute that is for all agencies across the country. And it, they will share the the methodology on their webpage. But you can go in and look at what the expected induced increase in travel will be and therefore what the implications will be for both traffic and emissions. On the next slide, you know, one of the things I continue to think is one of the most exciting innovations is in Virginia. As someone who lives in the DC area and moved here in nineteen ninety seven, which used to sound so much more recent. One of the first things that happened when I was here was Virginia put together a funding initiative for their transportation system and it was just destroyed. The the right and the left came together and everybody in between. No one had trust in Virginia DOT. That was in the early two thousands. In 2014, though, the legislature passed unanimously an effort to evaluate all of their new capacity projects by their statewide priorities. And they created a process whereby the benefits would be quantified and divided by state cost. And we have seen an incredible increase in people's belief that Virginia DOT is above politics, that they are focused on their priorities. And as a result, they've had a pretty easy time in increasing funding available for transportation since they put this in place. And the last thing on this that I will go to is on the next slide. They have really led the way in creating one of the best measures of transportation success that I've seen ever, which is multimodal access to jobs. So how many jobs and services are reachable by all modes of travel? And one of the things they particularly do to capture equity is particularly in access to jobs. They look at access to jobs for lower income households, which are much less likely to have access to multiple cars, if any car in their household. And this measure, which is basically using the same technology we use in our smartphones, but collecting lots of different trips and and crunching that data using cloud computing is the most complete measure of transportation success. Because instead of measuring how quickly your vehicle is moving, it's measuring how long it takes for anybody to get where they're going. If congestion slows that down, that's captured. But if, you know, a disconnected transit is what slows it down, that's captured. If there's a disconnected bike ped network, that is also captured in equal measure. And so I'll just finish up on the the next slide. We're gonna just focus for a few slides on how to work with USDAOT and getting what the remaining funding is in the IIJA. Just want to point out that of the IIJA, the majority of funding does go to surface transportation and overwhelmingly to the highway program, which is more flexible than I think folks really realize. On the next slide, this is, a lot of people focus on those competitive grants. I do just, this is not a complete list of competitive grants on the that are more highway focused. But it does give you a sense of how much bigger the formula grant program is nationwide than the competitive grant program. So while I think it's wonderful to focus on the transportation competitive grant programs, just remember, it really is a tiny minority of overall funding and the majority of it does go out by formula to state DOTs. Jumping to the next slide. This is my guidance about going forward and and talking about projects when you're speaking with USDAOT and with your congressional delegation. Again, remember that almost all money goes to state DOTs, MPOs and transit agencies through formula. If you apply for competitive grants, make sure all of your regional elected leaders know about it. And having your congressional delegation reach out by phone to USDAOT and support is really important. It will not take a project they don't like and get it funded, but it will take a project that is tied with other projects and boost it just a little bit. If you're looking for an earmark, talk to Congress about it. Don't talk to USDAOT. USDAOT doesn't have a role in earmarks and they find it really strange when people raise those projects. And if you're struggling with ODOT or a federal rule, I don't think people do enough to explain to USDAOT how it is harming or restricting your efforts. And then I just want to finish by saying the history is to fund capital costs from the federal level and leave operating estates and locals. My organization is pushing against that, but I do want to point out that throughout my five past reauthorization, local electeds have co-signed that approach. And if that is something that Portland Metro does not want to do going forward, that will be a break from the past. And you should think about how to communicate that break. And that is the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions. And that is the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Let's start with Counselor Rosenbaum.
I just, I just wanted to, a quick correction. One of your slides titled Virginia was actually Madison, Wisconsin.
You're right. The, the graphic was, Virginia was the one that pioneered its use within DOTs. But the best graphic example I have of the way the map shows up is from a Madison project. And I'm working with folks at the University of Wisconsin in develop, well, I worked with them to develop that methodology and they do most of the scoring at the University of Wisconsin for the state of Virginia. But thanks for pointing that out. You're absolutely right.
Thank you. And I think I was supposed to, you're good? Pass on the Counselor Gonzalez, but yeah, last Thursday, J-PAC members shared their initial thoughts about what draft priorities. And before we kind of begin our general discussion, I'd like to ask Counselor Gonzalez, the J-PAC Chair, to share some highlights.
All right. Great. Thanks, Deputy President Wong and Beth. So great to see you again virtually. For folks that don't know, and it was mentioned, but Beth also presented to J-PAC. And thank you for being a thought leader and for partnering with us, Beth, and bringing your expertise to help us learn about how we can continue to make our system better. So really appreciate that. So just want to highlight a few things. And it starts with thanking our staff, thanking our, our partners. I also thank you for being here, making the time to come talk to the council. We appreciate it. Catherine and Annalisa, y'all, y'all are wonderful. And there's been a lot of other folks that have worked really hard on this. So again, just want to start off by saying that our staff did a tremendous job. And we really did a lot of homework partnering with staff from all over, from every corner of the region to, to help build a consensus on J-PAC and make sure that we're heading in the right direction. So the, the document that was shared with us over, over email and in our packets includes the, the draft priorities and there's a, there's a few, there's a few themes, short-term funding, long-term funding, finish what we started, safe urban materials, main streets, transit, resiliency. I mean, these themes are not new to us as a council. But I'm really happy that the conversation at J-PAC has continued to, to lean into these. We did have some, some feedback highlighted, highlighted and I, and I took some notes here. There's a desire to place some emphasis on, on freight and intermodal connectivity as it results to shipping containers. The Port of Portland brought some comments up around that. We've also received a lot of direct feedback from community groups and residents throughout the region that we need to have a bigger emphasis on safety, which as we know through our regional transportation plan, has been a really, really big goal for us that we know we need to fill a gap. And also our local communities really talking to us about the local funding cliff as well. In addition to what the state is experiencing and how important it is to have an equitable approach. So I think, I think I've, have been able to chat with a lot of you about how, you know, we're also engaging with our local legislators, attending these statewide listening sessions to make sure that the, at the end of the day, what's in this packet in this document for J-PAC priorities is, is closely aligned with, with what we value as an agency because we're driving that. And also the, the power and the strength of our, of our partner. So I'll leave it there and just appreciate the opportunity to share some words before and don't have any more feedback to give than, than I've already given.
Great. Thank you for your leadership, Counselor Gonzalez. I'll turn it over to any questions.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I have a question for, for J-PAC Chair Gonzalez. As was explained by Beth, there's different models you can use. You can use, there's this, there's simplified funding where you use one or two or three sources. And then there's the Texas model where you use everything under the sun, you know, dog, dog leash permits or whatever. However, they use almost everything. I was noticing some of them. So how do we make and who is going to make the decision as how broadly we look for long-term funding sources? In other words, where is that decision going to be made? We're gonna have to look, are we gonna look at a whole range of things incrementally? Or are we gonna try and focus on two or three things? Historically, we've used the gas tax primarily.
Counselor, thank you so much for, for, for the question. I know that the, the joint committee is exploring a whole range of things. And I actually was able to hear Representative Susan McLean at the Forest Grove Chamber yesterday talk about this. So I know it's very, very relevant in her mind. She co-chairs with Senator Chris Korsak, the statewide committee. I know that they're looking at everything from indexing the gas tax, delivery fees, exploring what future revenue tools around a VMT, ensuring that electric vehicles are also paying their fair share on the system. And they really approach, I think, approaching it with, with an equity lens, trying to make sure that the, that whatever fees are raised are equitable and fair and help us do that work. I mean, beyond that, your question about who, who answers this? I, I think the, the state legislature does here locally and, and as we know, our legislators are an extension of us. And so that's why we're working so closely with them to bring our expertise and to, and to hopefully make the best package possible. And at this point, if it's okay with you, I'd also love to defer to our staff who are carrying this work for us and have a much deeper bench of knowledge and experience. But as J-PAC Chair, I want to make sure I let you know that generally that's what the conversation is right now.
Thank you, Counselor Gonzalez. I mean, I honestly, I think you captured a lot of what I would have said. So don't undersell yourself. But yeah, I mean, I think ultimately it will be the Oregon Legislature who will be making this decision. And ultimately, obviously, the governor also has to sign it. This is a key piece. And, and you know, I think, I guess I would think of it this way in terms of the funding sources. I, I don't envision a moment where we will look like Texas, where everything under the sun is, is on the table or passes. I do think that this is a moment where we are having a more expanded conversation than we usually do about transportation funding sources. Particularly in light of the understanding that the gas tax is not a sustainable source of funding in the future. There is a real openness to explore other methods. But I would say the other methods that I have heard that are on the table still very much have a nexus to transportation. So what is you call it? A, a dog leash fee is probably less on the table. Or, or things of that nature. But you know, so more expensive conversation overall, but still probably limited in terms of wanting to have some sort of nexus transportation. Catherine, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. And I would just add, both for J-PAC and for this council, a couple of things that we've heard over the past few months from legislators who are wrestling with this. It is clear that the metro region does have a pretty strong role to play in making sure that the legislature as a whole and our delegation in particular understands the criticality of the package. And so yet that connects to what Annalisa talked about last week when she talked about just sort of the general political posture. And the other thing that they have said to us as a region pretty clearly is, you know, we need your support for specific mechanisms. If you want to see a package move forward, we're gonna need you to stand behind at least some of the mechanisms as a region. So no surprises there, but definitely something we've heard from legislators.
If I might follow up with just a comment. And Counselor Gonzalez mentioned, it would seem that it would be helpful to have a sort of a set of criteria under which these various things were done, such as inequity, such as cost of administration, such as, you know, creation of whole new, you know, technologies or something that would counter indicate using certain kinds of things. And we know some tools work and some tools don't. Some tools could be implemented but don't generate. One of the ones on Texas, it generated one thousand dollars. I mean, you know, why, why even bother, you know, administration, your tracking fee is not even worth it. So if, if we could have and make known as a set of criteria, I mean, and metro is good at doing that, our overall values, a set of criteria that we think are usable for evaluating the various kinds of things, that would be what's great.
Thank you, Counselor.
I have, I have a few questions. Maybe just for a question for the panel overall, you know, I was kind of struck when Beth talked about that system in Virginia that was very successful because it was apolitical. And I'm wondering how they came about an apolitical system? And maybe for both, both panelists, like where do we stand in, in Oregon now? Like is transportation seen as, you know, very politicized and divisive? Or like, yeah, where are we in comparison to, to Virginia?
Beth, do you want to kick us off with the answer to the first half of that and I can handle the second half of that?
That sounds good. I really don't have the answer to the second half. But the, the, the first half is, it, it's, it's a, it's a very transparent process that everyone understands. There's a ver, there's a limited number of priorities. So I've seen other states try to do this and they have, you know, twelve priorities with forty-seven subparts and no one can keep track of it. And no one thing moves the needle. So it, it, it seems like a black box. But this is pretty clear what you need to do to get a project funded. And it's based on statewide priorities that have been agreed to unanimously by their legislature. So people feel like they understand how to, I mean, I can put it in the positive way of, you know, get their projects funded or frankly, a little more cynical way, which is game the system. But gaming the system is gaming it for their priorities that they've agreed to. And that doesn't feel political. They can see how if their project isn't funded, there's a substantive change they can make to move it up the priority list. And that makes it feel more fair and makes it, makes it clear to people that it's not a matter of how powerful your state legislator is or your local mayor is, but it's a matter of how well your project succeeds in achieving statewide priorities.
And how do they address kind of the different interests in like urban metro centers versus everywhere else?
Question. And, and I could do two hours on Virginia's system. There's so many interesting things in what they did. But they have four different types of areas in their state. There's large urban, medium urban, small urban and rural. And within their five big priorities, there's a different emphasis in those different typologies. So in the big urban, congestion reduction is a huge priority. But in rural areas, congestion is a luxury that would only come with a very successful economy. And they don't get to complain about congestion. They wish for it. So they focus on economic development and safety. Those are their big priorities. So there's just a different emphasis based on the typology that allows them to address that. There's also another quick, nice little part of the system. They have a statewide pot and then they have pots of funding for each of their regions. And their rankings on projects based on how well they do under these priorities is ranked within each region and then statewide. So they know each region is gonna get some money and they're not all competing statewide.
What about in Oregon?
Yeah, let me attempt to answer the second part of your, your question, Counselor. I don't know if I would call transportation apolitical. In, in Oregon, I would think I would, I would call it bipartisan. I think in this moment of, of really intense political division in our country, in our state, in our neighborhoods, it's hard to think of an issue that's truly apolitical. But I do think that this is truly a bipartisan issue. It is one in which both Democrats and Republicans feel is really important that they do hear about from their constituents, whether that is in rural Oregon or here in the metro area. As I think I talked about last week, traditionally, the transportation packages are bipartisan. Some of that has to do with the fact that it's revenue raising. But I think some of that has to do with the importance of the issue to, to all legislators and to all Oregonians.
And does it, do we have that same kind of clarity between kind of the different regions and, and types of projects that each kind of type of metropolitan or small city kind of might see? So I thought that was really compelling.
I think so. Yeah. I think we, you know, at a large, a high level.
I, I mean, I would add, Counselor, that one of the things that's always been navigated with one of these packages and was at play in twenty seventeen is you had these enormous capital investments in these freeway projects in the Portland metro area. And so the question is, what is the rest of the state getting? What are the more rural areas of the state getting in terms of investment? And a lot of that is road maintenance, but in, in that circumstance, because of the important, importance of these corridors to freight, the, the big projects in the Portland metro area were sold as statewide projects. And I think that's going to be part of the question with this package is if we are again investing billions in these infrastructure projects in the Portland metro area, as well as in things like great streets, safer schools, where are the commensurate investments in some of the more rural parts of the state?
I was, last time we had this conversation, you know, I think we heard that something along the lines of funding unites us and projects divide us. And actually, I was wondering, you encouraged me to ask about, about that when, when she was here. And I'm wondering, is that like a principle that you might agree with that works like in our jurisdictions nationally? That we, we should like focus on talking about funding and not special, specific projects necessarily? Or are there ever ways to, to frame it?
That's a very good question. And, and I hate to give, you know, the it depends answer. I, I, I think that a lot of people have trouble grasping what you're trying to achieve in transportation without an example of what you mean. You might talk about particular principles, but it's always good to have specifics to explain what you mean. Because the average person thinks in terms of projects and not in terms of outcomes, unfortunately. But you know, there's definitely ways to group them together to say, for example, we have come up with a program of projects that we would like to be funded and they were chosen because they, they do these things that match our priorities and this is how we came to that decision. And you know, like with the Virginia DOT show, specifically why they really stand out. One other thing I'll mention about their process is they do divide the benefits by the cost to the state. So that they don't see very large projects outscoring small projects. As their former deputy secretary would say, if I spend, you know, a hundred million dollars on one project with great benefits or, you know, a hu, a hundred million dollars on a hundred million dollar projects that have the same amount of benefits, it doesn't matter. It matters that we get the benefits for the cost. And I think that that has also been something that's given people a lot of confidence. So that can help match what you're trying to achieve with a specific list of projects.
Very helpful. Any other comments?
No.
All right. Well, I want to thank our guests, Beth and Miles, and thanks to half the staff and all of Florida continuing this conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to COO Communications. Welcome back.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Wong and remaining metro counselors. I recently returned from visiting family in Mexico City. And while I was there, you know, for fun and not for work, since it's a transportation themed discussion today, I wanted to just share a couple of observations with you that I, that I think were kind of fun and interesting. So Mexico City, for those who don't know, is a, a city of twenty-two million people. It is both dense and sprawling. And there are major transportation issues there. It often takes hours to travel by car. There is a robust public transportation system, but that often gets caught in the same congestion that the cars get caught in. But there are also some really cool things that the city has done to, to address, making it more pedestrian friendly, some really beautiful dedicated like bike lanes and things. An example would be instead of having dedicated bike lanes on the sides of the road, they have several that are down the middle of like the median. So the median that we have on MLK, instead of, there's trees, but in Mexico, there are also trees and a dedicated lane. So those are things that we're like similar and familiar with. But one thing I wanted to show you and I'm going to attempt to share screen, which is kind of like doing math in public. But this thing, Mexicable, Mexi-Cable, there are now four lines across the city that were public-private partnerships that were done to provide better access to kind of the, the outer neighborhoods that are poverty stricken. They cost seven pesos to, to take a ride, which is about 30 cents. About 40% of the funding was provided by the government and the rest by private organizations. It has reduced commutes for people from one to two hours to 17 minutes. And they carry about 90,000 people a day. So it's like the system of gondolas when I first saw it, it's like, this is a tourist thing and it's not. It was really, it is a beautiful trip to take because you can see the views of volcanoes and of the city. But it is primarily for people to get around and for the local residents to get around. So just a cool example of something that I had not seen or heard of before that I thought you might appreciate as well. And that is my update for you.
Well, thank you so much. Welcome back. Any counselor communications? All right. Well, seeing no further action, the council work session is adjourned. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, the 25th, July 25th, 2024 at 10:30.